A lot of things going on. My moment of silence will be for peace in Europe. So whatever your thoughts are, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. Alderman Condon, if you'd please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Brian, our city clerk, please call the roll.
Done.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Cornet.
Here.
Dickman.
Jobson.
Here.
And Ortiz.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the city council. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance here today and anybody on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a great place for everyone. I ask especially for the folks in here, if you have a cellphone, just a reminder, please put it on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking tonight. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're at, and you have five minutes. Please be respectful of us, we certainly will be respectful of you. Thank you. Will, Alderman, please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for February 9, 2022. Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? City Administrator Spiegel, any update for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Roger, very good. And then, will, Alderman, please move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for February 16th? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have two appointments and a couple proclamations, so I'll read both appointments and ask for a motion to approve. Park and Rec, an appointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Ching Ming Hu from the 5th Ward, and then to the Riverfront Improvement Commission, Roma Taylor from the 5th Ward. Is there a motion to approve? So move and a second, all in favor for those appointments?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Thank you. We have two proclamations this evening, Women in Construction Week and World Kidney Day. Women in Construction Week will be read by Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a City of Davenport proclamation. Whereas National Association of Women in Construction, NAWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50, has distinguished itself for 59 years as the voice of women in construction in the Quad City area, and whereas the work done by NAWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has benefited Davenport through community development and educational programs, and whereas NAWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas the construction community represented by NAWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotions of skilled trades careers, and a positive vision of the future, and whereas NAWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has sought to achieve successful results for Davenport, Iowa, and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations, now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby recognize NAWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction, and do hereby proclaim March 6 through 12, 2022, as 2022 Women in Construction Week in the City of Davenport, and encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments, dated this 23rd day of February 2022. I move the proclamation.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if you would please come down, presenting tonight will be, or accepting tonight will be Stephanie Hintermeister and Becky Avis.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor. There you are. Congratulations. There you are. Now stand here. And go. If you'd like to say something.
Okay.
On behalf of Quad Cities Chapter 50, I would like to thank the City of Davenport, Mayor Mattson, and the city council members for this proclamation for our 2022 Women in Construction Week. NAWIC's mission is to enhance the success of women in the construction industry, and we provide awareness of the opportunities available for women and emphasize the growing role of women in the construction industry. WIC Week is a time for local chapters to give back to their communities. Chapter 50 does so during the year through its scholarship program and by partnering with local agencies such as Humility Homes and Services, the Quad City Engineering and Science Council, Winnie's Place, and the Girl Scouts of Eastern Iowa and Western Illinois. This year, we're collecting daily necessity and household items to donate to the Humility Homes and Services Fresh Start Center, and we're going to drop off our donations on Friday, March 11th. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you very much. The next one is World Kidney Day, and that will be read by Alderman Cornet. Alderman Cornet, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. City of Davenport proclamation. Whereas there are an estimated 37 million Americans with kidney disease, and whereas it is critical that attention be brought to this often overlooked but increasingly common disease, major risk factors include diabetes, high blood pressure, a family history of kidney failure, and being over the age of 60. And whereas early detection and treatment of kidney disease could result in fewer Iowans requiring dialysis treatments or transplantation, and whereas the National Kidney Foundation represents Davenport patients, transplant recipients, and people affected by kidney disease and their family members, and whereas the month of March is National Kidney Month, and March 10, 2022 is World Kidney Day, and whereas the National Kidney Foundation is the leading organization in the United States dedicated to the awareness, prevention, and treatment of kidney disease for hundreds of thousands of healthcare professionals, millions of patients and their family, and tens of millions of Americans at risk, and whereas the Village Stroll takes place in the Village of East Davenport each fall in order to raise awareness of the 37 million Americans living with kidney disease, and now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim March 10, 2022, as World Kidney Day in the City of Davenport, and call upon the citizens of Davenport to take care of their kidneys and get tested if they are at risk, dated this 23rd day of February 2022. And accepting this proclamation will be Denise Eilers.
Can you move the proclamation?
Oh, move the proclamation, be accepted.
Second. Sorry.
Oh.
She's accepting this for the National Kidney Foundation.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mayor Mattson and the council. As he said, my name is Denise Eilers. I am a registered nurse and a member of the National Kidney Foundation Iowa Board of Directors and a long, long time resident of Davenport. My experience with kidney disease, however, is deeply, deeply personal. My late husband Jerry was on home hemodialysis for 25 years, but, I always hear gasps when I say that, but he led a perfectly wonderful, normal life. He worked full-time as a CPA, played golf, in my estimation, a little too much, and volunteered extensively in our Quad City community. We raised our son, traveled, and updated our Home in the Heights. The National Kidney Foundation is able to raise awareness through proclamations and events during the National Kidney Month and on World Kidney Day, which was mentioned, is on March 10, 2022. We also have multiple landmarks in Iowa changing their external lighting to orange, our color, on World Kidney Day. That is going to include this year the I-74 Bridge. We also encourage everyone to wear orange on World Kidney Day and talk to your friends, family members, and coworkers about risks for kidney disease, which is mentioned in the proclamation. For your information, you can go to MinuteForYourKidneys.org and take a short quiz to see if you're at risk. If so, please discuss your risk factors with your doctor. Tests to determine kidney disease are so simple, it's a blood test and a urine test, that's it. Sadly, as was mentioned, a vast majority of people, including many, many Iowans with kidney disease, are unaware of the fact until they're almost to the point of kidney failure. The National Kidney Foundation also raises awareness through the year with our educational program called Your Kidneys and You, and our kidney walks taking place across the state on May 1st. One of those walks in the Village of East Davenport, the Village Sidewalk Stroll, will be starting at Lindsay Park on May 1st. We would love to have you join us for the walk, a silent auction, and the opportunity to support the National Kidney Foundation and learn more about kidney disease. Again, thank you so much for acknowledging this vital, vital awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we have a couple presentations. The first is Visit Quad Cities, and our friend, Mr. Harrell and Mr. Kenobi, Gathering of the Green, please.
Good evening, Mayor Mattson, members of council. It's good to be with you tonight. I'm Dave Harrell, President and CEO of Visit Quad Cities. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you and just share with you a quick update on an event that is extremely important for our destination and for our tourism efforts. And as you know, the last couple of years certainly haven't been the best in our industry, but I will tell you, we've got an incredibly bright future ahead, and this is an event that definitively yields positive results for not only downtown Davenport, but certainly the region. It should be noted that Visit Quad Cities is incredibly grateful to you, sir, and this body for your investment and your continued commitment and collaboration and everything that you do to put us in a position to be successful. So thank you for everything you do for us. Gathering of the Green was canceled in 2020. Tony's going to touch on some of the details here in a minute, and I will tell you from my perspective, it was something that I was disappointed in, not only because of the economic development value and what it brings to this community and the Quad Cities, but I'd never seen it before, so I was kind of looking forward to hearing all about it, not only from Mr. Kenobi, but my team, who works very hard on producing this event and making it a reality for the community. I do want to recognize Rick Palmer and the River Center team, they're phenomenal partners of Visit Quad Cities, and just want to say, I think Rick's back there hiding, he probably didn't know I was going to recognize him, but I do want to say thank you to Rick and their team. I mean, the gathering is one of the largest reunions, and that's really kind of what it is of its kind, and it's all things, you know, connected to John Deere, and obviously that's important to our community because John Deere is such a driving force of everything that we do, and certainly we want to recognize them and their involvement with this particular event. We have been working on this event for the last, gosh, probably year and a half, pretty rigorously, as an organization. Tony serves on the board, and our operation and staff do a lot of the heavy lifting to kind of bring this thing to fruition, and so here in mid-March, it will be here, and so we're excited about it. We will literally have people from all over the United States, literally from Washington to Rhode Island, and we'll have some international influx too, and Tony will touch on that in a minute. And what a great opportunity. And so when we think about events and when we think about economic development and the things that we do in the tourism space, that is really a team effort, and it really requires not only just our organization, but all of you, and the public sector collaboration and the teamwork that's required to pull off an event like this, because there's a lot of moving parts with it. I want to recognize Lynn Hunt on our team, who kind of leads this effort for us, our whole staff has been working on this very closely. I do want to recognize Ms. Spiegel as a member of our board and finance and audit and compliance committee chair. Corey, thank you for everything that you do for us, and on behalf of our board, we're just grateful that we have the opportunity to host an opportunity like Gathering of the Green. It's a lot of fun, it's a big deal, it's going to have an incredible tangible impact on downtown Davenport, and it'll be here before you know it. So I'm going to turn it over to Tony and let him kind of share with you a couple of the key nuggets and details and some things that we felt important to share with you tonight, and then we're happy to answer any questions, but thank you again for everything you do for us. We're so grateful for your support, and we look forward to March 16th to the 19th. So, Tony?
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, so the Gathering of the Green is really a convention, as Dave mentioned, it's a family reunion of John Deere antique ag and equipment, tractors and equipment collectors from all over the world. So we typically draw from 40-plus states, we're at 32 at this point, we typically draw from up to half a dozen foreign countries, we've got incoming from Germany, Australia, and Canada, of course, at this point. So pretty happily clicking right along to being close to our numbers from two years ago, and if you remember, I stood before you two years ago on a Wednesday night and said, yeah, whatever about COVID, we are full speed ahead, we're going to have this event, we're going to start setting up Sunday, and by Thursday morning, the next morning at 8:00, we shut it down. That's how fast the world fell apart. So fortunately, we've got COVID going in the right direction this time around, and we are full speed ahead, and I'm promising that this time. We'll have pretty close to, if not 3,000 people coming to downtown Davenport from, as Dave said, a number of states, so pretty excited about that. For 10 years or more, maybe at this point, we've been in downtown Davenport. We were in Moline, and happily so, but we outgrew the Holiday Inn over there and struck up a deal with the City of Davenport and the River Center, and have been really enjoying those accommodations ever since. Now picture, if you will, though, this crowd is coming to town with large pickup trucks, trailers, we've got 80-plus vendors coming to town to sell their stuff in the River Center, and most of the time, these types of events happen at fairgrounds, at big, open, rural more type of places and venues, so the thought of coming to a downtown metro location was a little bit outside of the comfort zone, but we made a lot of arrangements, we worked hard with Corey and the rest of the team to make that happen, and people love it down here. The hotels down here are all full, many of the other hotels in town, in your town, are nearing capacity, we're working with Rhythm City, with Steeple Gate, with Quality Inn, and some of the others, so we're very happy about that. So we've got a new event happening this time around, we're typically not a tractor show, but we're going to feature in a new tractor show renting space at the fairgrounds, we're going to feature any type of equipment that might have been manufactured in the Quad Cities or have a connection here. So not only John Deere, but International Harvester, Minneapolis Moline, Rock Island Plow, Root and Vandewerk, Vli, all those will be featured and draw even more people, we hope, to this show. We've got 700, almost 800 people signed up for tours of local plants, places of interest, the Rock Island Arsenal, lots of different things that we might take for granted, but the people from Delaware, or Canada, or Germany, just, first of all, they can't wait to see the Mississippi River, right? So, you know, whatever, that's great, that's awesome. So, and we've been working pretty closely with the downtown Davenport partnership, not just the city and the River Center, but to make sure that the downtown businesses are ready for us, that they understand there's going to be a boatload of pickup trucks taking up every parking spot down here, which may be a little bit of a hassle for a couple days, but I think we like that. So anyway, we do appreciate your support, we do appreciate your help, we've got restaurants that are all excited and do a great job, the hotels do a great job of welcoming these people, they wear our logo on their T-shirts, they wear hats that say "Gathering of the Green" and John Deere on them, and you guys really do a great job of rolling out the welcome mat, so thank you very much for your support. We'll take any questions if you've got them.
Yeah, people might, I'll let folks say stuff today if they want, but so, thank you very much. Of course, separately, Mr. Harrell, thank you for your leadership of Visit Quad Cities and the tourism and getting back on, you've worked hard over the last year and a half to keep it focused and alive, and now we're running, we're at the track meet, we started and we're going, and thank you for that leadership, Mr. Kenobi and your team for bringing this here to Davenport. Davenport is extremely excited to host and to have, and I'm so appreciative, as usual, to our team. We have the thing here, well, you bring something to us, we problem solve and figure it out and deal with it, so that's what's happening. So on behalf of the city, I'm just, thank you for bringing it, and we look forward to, so I see, Alderman Gripp.
Yep, I just wanted to echo those sentiments that the mayor expressed, that we're grateful that you have this event in downtown Davenport, and that was exactly what I was thinking, rural tractor show in downtown Davenport, but why not? You made it work, and I know it takes a team, but Tony, you and I have talked, and I know how much work you put into making this happen, so I just wanted to say thank you to you all, and especially for having it in Davenport, but I know, you know, John Deere is the Quad Cities, absolutely. Thank you.
Most of these folks have hair color like the mayor's and mine, not yours, but they've got deep pockets and they intend to spend it, so.
Silver. So thank you, anyone else? Very good, let's give them applause. Okay, thank you. So we have one more presentation. As we might have seen with the girls soccer team, national team in the news, that's a great thing lately, so that's cool as heck. We've had some ladies today do some presentations, that's good, and now we want to recognize something that's a little bit new in the state, so girls wrestling, and we are honored in this city to have a couple that did really well, and I know there's been a couple before you, that, these folks, that did well also, but we thought it was important to draw attention a little bit to some ladies who are stepping into something that hasn't been going on for a while. So we have three of them today, I'll read a little bit about them, and then I'll ask friends from Assumption and West to meet me at the podium. So just a couple little things, we have the names Olivia, Jada, and Naya. Olivia's a freshman at Assumption, wrestled at 120 pounds, record of 17 and 4, quite impressive, placed seventh at the girls state wrestling championship. She's coached by head coach Sonny Alvarez, Kevin DeFries, and a friend of ours, Ben Jobson, who's unable to be here today. Jada, sophomore at West, wrestled 110, a record of 16 and 15, placed fourth, quite impressive, at the girls state wrestling championship. Unfortunately, broke her collarbone, takes four weeks off, but still kept going, that's quite a thing there. And Naya, 145 pounds, 24 and 9, placed fifth at the state wrestling championship, upset the number one ranked girl in the quarterfinals, continuing her academic and wrestling career at Wardorf College in Forest City, Iowa, coached by James Weisrock, Wade Warnicki, Noah Mitchell, and Dylan Mitchell. So I'm happy to meet you guys at the podium, and we'll give a couple certificates. Coaches, please. So Olivia? Do I recognize you?
My twin sister.
Yeah, very good. And Naya?
Yep.
Okay, so, okay, right here?
Yeah.
All right, so let's just kind of angle this way, folks, however you want to do it. Is this okay? You tell us where to stand.
No, that's fine. All right, we're going to phone in camera. One, two. One, one. One, two.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, okay? Congratulations, thank you. Let's give these good applause. And so you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have to, you know, do something else, it's certainly okay to do that, great representation of our city, so thank you very much. I'll pause just for a second here as they make their way. All right, next item is petitions and communications from myself and council folks, so Alderwoman Lee, I'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let people know that the 8th Ward meetings are back. The first one for this year will be on March 10th, the second Thursday, at 6:00 PM at the Eastern Library. I'm still working out the speaker, but I'm really excited to start seeing my 8th Ward constituents again. So again, it's the Eastern Library at 6:00 PM on March 10th, which is the second Thursday, and I'll have more information, and we'll reach out to folks as it gets a little closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak, and I want to also thank you for recognizing these young ladies this evening. The growth in women's wrestling has been astounding these past few years. Iowa Wrestling Coaches and Officials Association has put on a state event for the last four years. Four years ago, there was less than 100 participants, and this year, there were approximately 700 participants, just showing the exponential growth within this sport, and the three young ladies that participated, Ms. Regal, Ms. Daly, and Ms. Smith, watching them compete in a grueling event, as you kind of alluded to, Ms. Daly and her injury, I know all three of them had to deal with various injuries, and so watching them compete, represent themselves, represent their schools, represent the City of Davenport at such a high level on the state stage is wonderful. Also, to note that the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union at this past season's state event announced that they will now be sanctioning female wrestling in Iowa high schools, and so the growth will continue, we look forward to seeing what potential there will be, and hopefully we are able to recognize many more athletes that compete and excel at the state level, and just want to say thank you again for recognizing them this evening and congratulate these young ladies, these excellent athletes, on a great season. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'm excited, tomorrow will be my first Ward meeting, it'll be virtual, so next month we do plan on having a location, and the speaker will be the popo, the police, so we need to figure out how we can get some of these folks on page with the police and policing, and what's a police call, and what's a 911 call, and what's non-emergency call, so I'm kind of excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good, we'll move on. Okay, we have a couple items on discussion agenda tonight, so the first one is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.36, 2.42, and 2.90 to change the geographic area in which civil service employees may live and to include part of Illinois.
and so watching them compete, represent themselves, represent their schools, represent the city of Davenport at such a high level on the state stage is wonderful. Also, to note that the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union, at this past season's state event, announced that they will now be sanctioning female wrestling in Iowa high schools, and so the growth will continue, we look forward to seeing what potential there will be, and hopefully, we are able to recognize many more athletes that compete and excel at the state level, and just want to say thank you again for recognizing them this evening, and congratulate these young ladies, these excellent athletes, on a great season, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir, good evening, I'm excited, tomorrow will be my first ward meeting, it'll be virtual, so next month, we do plan on having a location, and the speaker will be the popo, the police, so we need to figure out how we can get some of these folks on page with the police, and policing, and what's a police call, and what's a 911 call, and what's an emergency call, so I'm kind of excited, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Very good, we'll move on. Okay, we have a couple items on discussion agenda tonight, so the first one is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 2.36, 2.42, and 2.90 to change the geographic area in which civil service employees may live, and to include part of Illinois, is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman please move second consideration? Motion and a second, is there any discussion from anyone on the city council? See, Alderman Condon.
I'll have more comments likely next week, but for now, I just wanted a comment that since I've become a councilperson, I've, I'm very proud of our staff, I think they're some of the most impressive people that I've had a chance to work with, and I come from a very small organization, and I've had a chance to learn a lot from you, very impressed with everything, and the accreditations that I've learned the importance of, and the impressiveness that each of our major departments are accredited, and our other departments that don't necessarily align with accreditations have, are showered with praise and awards from other things, and simply put, we need more people like you in our city, it's so important, there's nothing that doesn't get better when you guys choose to call Davenport home, our neighborhoods, our schools, churches, the culture, the relationships of the people that you serve, I dare to say you'd be better at your job, so for now, I just wanted to say that rather than speaking about what I maybe don't prefer about this policy, I just wanted to speak positively to say that Davenport is a great place to live, it offers so much, in part because of how great you guys are at your jobs, and we need people viscerally invested in our community to continue to pull everything in the right direction, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Alderman Condon, anyone else? Very good, Brian, if you please call the roll for second consideration. Kelly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good, thank you, Brian, this ordinance moves to third consideration, the next one is a resolution awarding a contract for the Second Street Streetscaping Project to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities in the amount of $304,568, is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman please move the resolution? Motion and a second, any discussion from the city council? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll on this resolution. Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Cornet?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good, the resolution is adopted, the next item is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? Motion and a second, Brian, please call the roll for all items on the consent agenda. Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes, except number 16, please, no.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain for, in number four, for four addresses, this is the URTE resolution, and the addresses are 506 West 8, 709 Gaines, 314 Gaines, and 517 Ripley, but otherwise, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
I'm abstaining from number four, URTE, for the address 400 River Drive, and yes for all other items.
Gripp?
Yes.
And Cornet?
Yes.
Nine yeses, with Alderman Dunn, no on number 16, and Alderwoman McGinnis, and Alderman Condon's abstentions for number four. Thank you, Mr. Crump, okay, so the consent agenda is approved with those notes, the next item is other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, we have a couple today, so I'll read those, but first, to do those, we have to suspend the rules to take those on, so is there a motion for suspension of the rules? There's a motion and a second for suspension of the rules, Brian, please call the roll on suspension. Cornet?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good, the rules are suspended, so we can address these two items, the first one is a resolution approving a lane closure request for the listed date and time, I'll read, River Center Adler Theater, Quad City Symphony Orchestra Symphony Day 2022, 136 East Third Street, Thursday, February 24th, 2022, 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM, closure, Northern Most Parking Lane and Northern Most and Middle Travel Lanes on East Third Street from Brady Street to Iowa Street for loading and unloading of school buses, is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an Alderman move the resolution? Motion and a second, any discussion, Alderwoman McGinnis?
Yes, this is in Third Ward, and I will beg the indulgence of the city council tonight, this was a, an event that is, it's a symphony for the students, it's not something that has always been, we've gotten approval or asked for approval, but we started to do that several years ago, as we do for everything, but then COVID intervened for the last two years, and so this was not done in a, the kind of timely fashion that I would like to see, but understanding that, you know, we're dealing with irregular times, and so I would ask your indulgence on this, please, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis, anyone else? Very good, Brian, please call the roll on this resolution. Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good, that resolution is adopted, then the last one is a resolution supporting HF2310 to add functional family therapy and multi-systematic therapy as covered services under the Iowa Medicaid program, is there any public with comment? Very good, will an Alderman please move the resolution? And the second, is there any discussion from my colleagues? Alderman Gripp?
Could we have someone from staff come up and discuss this for us, please?
Good evening, Sarah at Davenport City Administration, to give you guys a little bit of background on this particular bill, we have been working with our state legislators over the past nine months, leading up to the Iowa legislative season, on a variety of state systems improvements that have to do with public safety, so we know that we want to be able to address public safety holistically, and not just treat the symptoms of violence, and so one of the programs that is offered here in our community through VeraFrench is both MST and FFT, they're clinical programs that work with our highest at-risk youth, that see a lot of success in curbing recidivism rates among those youth that are committing crimes in our community, but VeraFrench is limited in the amount of, the amount of youth that they're able to serve, because they are funding this program through grant funds, and so one of our requests to the legislative body was to be able to cover these programs through Medicaid funding, and Representative Gary Moore has been working at the Capitol to bring that to fruition, so this bill would cover both of those therapy options through Iowa Medicaid, we think that this is a great move for our state, and will hopefully help families and youth in our community that are in need.
Thank you, anyone else? Yeah, please carry, continue.
Thank you, Your Honor, so I just wanted to say, I think this is proof that when the city of Davenport talks about addressing crime, we're trying to address it in a number of ways, including preventative measures, and I know the mayor, city administrator Ms. Ott, and Chief Sikorski, Major Bladell, we met with a lot of community partners and asked them, what was important, what are different ways that we can address crime prevention and preventative ways, and this was something that our nonprofit community partners suggested, and I want to thank Representative Gary Moore for sponsoring this, and then I would ask our colleagues to support it, essentially, this is just making the ability to offer these services to the youth who need it easier, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, anyone else? Very good, Brian, please call the roll on this resolution. Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Lee?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor. Very good, this resolution is adopted, thank you, so the next item, is there any public with business other than what was on the agenda? Again, I know you know, Mr. Dale, but I'll just remind it for everybody, so I say it all the time, please give, we'd love to know your name and address or ward, if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you are from, and five minutes, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dale Yelmar, and I live in the sixth ward, before I comment on what was said yesterday, I'd like to read from Tab 1, from a website my team and I are putting together, the website isn't complete yet, so it won't be published until it is complete, so until it is completed, you will just hear some excerpts from it, the following is from Tab 1 of the website, has to do with a brief history of the downtown one-ways, and it says, and it's very short, according to the city council minutes, an ordinance was passed on June 19th, 1935, declaring the 3rd and 4th were to be made one-ways, but it was not to take effect right away, according to the city council minutes of February 17th, 1954, an ordinance was passed to have the streets changed sometime in April of 1954, 3rd and 4th Streets were eventually opened as one-way streets on the 20th of April, 1954, almost 19 years after the original ordinance was passed, now for my response to a couple things said yesterday, we heard from an Alderman, and I won't say who, because I'm not supposed to say, that the greatest concern is speed, drag racing and speeding is not acceptable anywhere in this city, drag racing and speeding is not a natural product of a one-way street, it is the product of a lack of enforcement, so what have we tried so far? Nothing, Mr. Carter admitted yesterday that the conversion to two-way streets is not a silver bullet, and I totally agree, I personally think we should address one concern at a time, let's take a look at the speed issue, on 31st and 32nd Streets, we tried speed humps, now I am personally not a fan of speed humps, but they do seem to slow traffic, another thing we could try is removing all the traffic signals, and installing four-way stop signs at every downtown intersection, would that eliminate drag racing and speed? I think so, is that a good idea? No, it isn't, so somewhere between doing nothing and installing four-way stop signs at every downtown intersection, there is an answer, I'm not certain exactly what it is, but so far, we haven't tried anything, now for my second point, one Alderman said yesterday, if we're going to do this, let's make sure we do it right, I agree 100%, I believe that doing it right means all the way to Telegraph Road, not just to Marquette or Division Street, let me tell you why I say that, let's say you decide to stop the two-ways at Marquette Street, and that you're driving west on the new two-way 3rd Street, what do you do when you get to Marquette? You either have to turn north or south, you can't go straight, and some of the traffic coming east may also want to turn north or south, confusing, yes, dangerous, absolutely, over the next couple of weeks, I'll address the issue of motorist and pedestrian safety, stay tuned, as my team and I continue assembling the data to include in our website, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
My name is Terry Bush, I live on Thornwood Avenue, and I'm in the third ward, I want to talk about the two-way street, I was here last night, and my take of this whole thing is we want to do this two-way street to appease the business community with the idea they might bring businesses to Downtown Davenport, and I'll just say that, you know, the one-way streets did not kill the businesses in Downtown Davenport, North Park Mall did, Village Shopping Center did, Elmore Avenue did, Duck Creek Plaza on the edge of Davenport did, you know, the people, the parking, remember the parking meters we had down here, you couldn't park next to your store that you wanted to go to, and you still had to pay a parking meter because you had to walk from the levee usually, but anyway, I don't think this is a good idea, $1.7 million to turn this into two-way streets, and the problem, part of, as a, you know, I was a bus driver in Downtown Davenport for 15 years, and I saw this traffic situations that come up, the delivery trucks that stop and block a lane, when you only got one lane, when they blocked the lane, what do you got left, and also, when the government bridge opens up, people going to work in the morning, 2nd Street and 3rd Street back up, if you only got one lane, you know, you only got one lane on 2nd Street anyway, but 3rd Street, so there's congestion, and then you've got these issues where you close these streets for St. Patrick's Day events, and the BICS, and all that kind of stuff, and just creates more problems, but anyway, I don't think it's a good idea, and I don't think that, you know, crossing the street is a danger now, I mean, you got a crosswalk out here, when you got the light, you can cross, I mean, what difference does it make if you got traffic coming both ways or just one way, in fact, it's probably safer one way, so I think this is a bad idea, and I don't understand why we want to spend $1.7 million to create traffic jams in Downtown Davenport, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Gary Hodges, I'm a resident in the first ward, down on Telegraph Road, I also would like to address the 3rd and 4th Street conversions, if you guys do that, you create a left-hand turn nightmare that's going to paralyze traffic from River Drive to Marquette, nothing will move in downtown, this two-way street thing is not a new idea, it was that way a long, long time ago, I've lived here for 68 years, and I was a very young man back when those were two-way streets, and since the left-hand turn created gridlock back then, the town has grown more than tenfold since then, and you're even going to create more gridlock, you have no way to alleviate the left-hand turn, you can't do it by timing the lights, you just back up traffic block after block after block, and then you cut traffic down to one lane in each direction, and like it was mentioned before, as soon as you park a delivery truck in one of those lanes, now you've shut down 3rd or 4th Street completely, okay, so converting these to two-way streets is a miserable idea, and that money can be well spent on other projects, like right now, you can't see the lane markers on 4th Street in front of the police station, if it rains, they're gone, they just disappear, okay, and it's like that almost all the way down 4th Street, so like I say, there's a lot of things that money can be spent on besides creating gridlock in Downtown Davenport, and as far as creating sidewalk eating areas for people in those downtown restaurants, in the 68 years I've lived here, I've never heard of anybody getting ran over on the sidewalk, so like I say, converting those streets to two-ways is a terrible, terrible idea, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Good evening, Bill Handel, Ward 4, also in Nashville, Tennessee, I'll talk about two things tonight, personally, I'll be pretty brief, discussion about the one-ways, conversion to two-ways, my initial reaction is, two items, one, I don't have any problem with it, I think things have been thought out pretty well about it, but I think the larger question we need to address is our relationship or downtown to the river, and if we can close down River Drive from Brady Street to the Arsenal Bridge every weekend, so that we can have an active and full use of the riverfront, then- so that we can have an active and full use of the riverfront, then if it works for this program, I'd say fine. As far as moving it, the boundaries of it from Marquette westward, I think that's a great idea. The reason we're doing it is to slow down traffic and for safety. We've got people that not only have a 12-month lease, like our downtown people do, we have people that are homeowners on 3rd and 4th Street. They have real skin in the game, and I think they benefit greatly from that. And rather than extending it all the way to, to, 3rd going all the way to Rockingham or Telegraph, I think probably would make sense to stop it right on Pine Street, because then you'll eliminate the need for a light at 3rd and Rockingham. So the second thing I want to talk about, we'll talk about it in more detail, but also, I feel that if we spend $10 millions of dollars for the resurfacing program, plus turning it to two-ways, the casual visitor in Davenport coming down from Quad City Airport over our Spalenda New Bridge, down River Drive, comes down onto 3rd and 4th Street, all they see is a two-way street that's every bit as wide and every bit as ugly as we currently have. I think the answer that I'm going to, I've been exploring, I'd like to at some point talk about, is Kirkwood Boulevard. I think, I talked to Kyle Carter about it yesterday. It's something that had been floated in the past. I think it's something that would be brought up again. Maybe in today's era, we can sell that, because I think a 15-foot-wide median in the middle of 3rd and 4th Streets that's green is something everybody could get behind, and our visitors would certainly take notice of. So the other thing I want to talk about is not pretending to Davenport directly, and I showed it to you in the past. Rock Island's County's Courthouse, you all know that it's scheduled to be taken down. We're a group trying to get some other ideas on how to reuse that facility, perhaps as a museum on the ground floor. Just give us about, if we get about a year or more time, I think we can make something happen on it. You may not know, or maybe you do, that when we have our St. Patrick's Day parade on the 12th of March, that is one day before the 125th anniversary of the dedication of the Rock Island Courthouse in 1897. So we're going to hope to have a number of people standing there in front of the courthouse that morning, because the parade will go right by it, to remind people and maybe to pass out information of the final role that the courthouse has played in the lives of citizens of Rock Island and the Quad Cities all these years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Ms. Spiegel, city administrator, anything from your staff? Very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone have a safe, we're adjourned. Everyone have a safe weekend. Watch out for the snow tomorrow.
This conference is...